Good evening. My name is Melissa Williams and I serve as the President of the Washington County Board of Education. I welcome members of the Board of Education, the superintendent, staff, and the community to the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting. Everyone is participating in this meeting using a telephone or an electronic device. It has always been the practice of the Washington County Board of Education to meet in person and to invite members of the public to the Board's meetings. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, certain legal directives and the need to safeguard the health of the community, it is necessary to participate in this public meeting by phone or an electronic device. Today's business meeting will be recorded and the public may access the public meeting now on Channel 99, Facebook, and on the WCPS website. The public comment portion of the meeting will not take place. The Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing to BOE@WCPS.k12.md.us and the information will be distributed to Board members and the superintendent. At this time, I call to order the public business meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. I see that we have all members present and our student member, so I declare a quorum. At this time, Peter Bickford will be reciting our Pledge of Allegiance and will follow that with a moment of silence. Mr. Bickford?
All right, can we please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for approval of the agenda for September 1st, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Yes, Bickford.
And the most, I'd move to amend the agenda to include an Item 7 under New Business, which includes a presentation, discussion, and a decision regarding the Governor's metrics and the associated stages for returning staff and small groups of students to school.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Mrs. Williams, I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there any discussion of the amendment? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote on the amendment. Would you please raise your hand, all those in favor of the amendment? Okay, unanimous, and the student member concurs. And now we'll vote on the agenda as amended. Any discussion of the amended agenda? All those in favor, please raise their hand. Okay, we're unanimous, and the student member concurs. Thank you. We'll move now to approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the retreat minutes dated Saturday, August 8th, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Are there any additions or corrections to the retreat minutes of August 8th? Hearing none, we'll move for the vote. All those in favor of approval of those minutes, please raise your hand. Mr. Ridenhour, do you have your hand up? Oh, you were, okay, thank you. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Affirmative. Are there any nays? Abstentions. Okay, so we have two members abstaining. So those minutes stand approved as read.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Thursday, August 18th, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the closed session dated August 8th, 2020?
18th.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, did I say 8? I beg your pardon. August 18th, 2020. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of the closed session minutes, please raise your hand. Thank you. We have seven affirmative votes. Motion carries.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated August 18th, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
I second.
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. I heard you first. Are there any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes dated August 18th, 2020? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval of those minutes? Okay, I have seven affirmative votes with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we usually have public comment, but the public comment portion of this meeting will not take place. However, the Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing We'll move on to Board Member Response to Public Comment. I would like to say that on behalf of the Board, I thank all those who have sent the Board emails or made phone calls or written letters. Each email, each letter has been read by Board members. And although it's been nearly impossible to respond to all due to the vast number of people, again, all have been read. Colleagues, is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Okay. We have no old business this evening, so we'll move right to new business. And our first item of new business is the consideration of a request of the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation to approve a naming right agreement. Mr. Marterano?
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, and Dr. Michael. John Marterano, Chief Legal Counsel. The agenda item before you this evening is a request from the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation, Inc. to approve a naming right relating to the new Vincent Roth Academic Center. We have with us this evening Mimi Dickinson, the Executive Director of the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation, who will make a brief presentation to the Board. Mimi?
Thank you, Mr. Marterano, and the Board of Education, and President Williams. I am making a, asking you to move to approve the naming rights agreement for the lobby located in the new Vincent Roth-Gro academic center, which is adjacent to the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. The Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation and Board of Education entered a naming rights agreement on September 3rd. The naming rights agreement authorized the foundation to identify entities and persons who would be willing to donate funds in exchange for being granted naming rights to the new addition to the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts facility that would be located in a new addition and the current Barbara Ingram for the Arts School Campus. The foundation has identified an entity willing to donate funds in exchange for being granted naming rights to the lobby located in the new Vincent Roth-Gro Academic Center. The foundation is seeking the Board of Education's approval of their naming right agreement at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. Is there a motion?
I'm the liaison to the foundation. I'd be happy to make that motion. I move to approve the naming right agreement for the lobby located in the new Vincent Roth-Gro Academic Center, which is adjacent to the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, as requested by the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation, Inc.
Thank you for the motion. Mr. Bickford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Marterano or Ms. Dickinson? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of the motion as read by Mr. Bickford? Okay, we have a unanimous vote with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item under consideration is this evening's consent agenda with Scott Bechtel, Supervisor of Purchasing, presenting. Mr. Bechtel?
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, and Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have four items for your review. The Purchasing Review Committee has reviewed these items and they are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Is there a motion?
I can make the motion. I feel like I'm making a lot of motions. That's okay, though. I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for HVAC filters to Tri-Dim Filter Corporation at the unit prices listed. Arrow Hive Technical Support Renewal to CDWG at a cost of $64,307.16. Maintenance and support of Avaya VoIP Telephone System Renewal to Carousel Industries at a cost of $89,616.51. And Bulk School Supplies to Impact Office Products at a cost of $24,700. Kurtz Brothers at a cost of $18,490.90. And School Specialty at a cost of $28,974.60.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Fisher, seconds.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. I heard Mrs. Murray first, but thank you. We'll move on to discussion or any questions that you may have, colleagues, or Mr. Bechtel.
The only question I had, the only question I had was the Bulk School Supplies. Is that a standard purchase or is that an additional purchase due to the pandemic?
No, these would be purchased, excuse me, basically due to the pandemic. I think right now, a lot of times, classrooms have kind of buckets of supplies or boxes or crayons and things like that. This would be to give each student their own set of supplies, so there is less sharing of those supplies in the classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Then we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval of this evening's consent agenda, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. We have a unanimous affirmative vote with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item of consideration is a donation to the Washington County Public Schools with Dr. Jana Palmer presenting. Dr. Palmer?
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, and members of the Board. I am requesting approval of a gift from Fiserv of $10,000 to Washington County Public Schools to assist our students with distance learning. $5,000 will be used to assist low-income students during distance learning with materials and supplies in both Hancock Elementary and Jonathan Hager Elementary Schools. And $5,000 has also been designated to support STEM instruction through distance learning.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer. Is there a motion, please?
Yes. Madam President, I move to approve a gift of $10,000 from Fiserv to Washington County Public Schools to assist during distance learning. These funds are designated in the amount of $5,000 to assist low-income and/or minority students in elementary schools, and the remaining $5,000 is designated for STEM programs.
Thank you for the motion. Mr. Stauffer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions for Dr. Palmer or any discussion? Mr. Stauffer, I see your hand.
Yes, I just have a question. Is Fiserv doing this just for Washington County or are they doing it to other school districts around the area? Or what is the situation? How did we come about this amount of money to be the recipient of it?
Mr. Stauffer, I'm not positive if they are supplying this to other school districts. They reached out to us and wanted to be able to support our students through distance learning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Then the vote is on Mr. Stauffer's motion to accept the donation from Fiserv. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we have a unanimous vote with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Palmer. Next, we have consideration of the state and local FY 2022 Capital Improvement Program Plan with Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Prue, and the Director of Facilities Planning and Development, Mr. Rollins.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, members of the Board. This is Jeff Prue, Chief Operating Officer. Mr. Rollins and I are pleased this evening to present to you the state and local FY 22 Capital Improvement Program. As you know, this is a request that comes to you annually that works within the developments of the program that we have, of the funding that we believe is available to the school system. If we can have the PowerPoint slide up on the screen, I think we can walk you through some of the assumptions and guidelines. Again, we limit our funding to what's available to match with our local funding constraints. We're addressing our systemic renovation projects as we outlined in the Educational Facilities Master Plan. And we're focusing on keeping our buildings operational at this time, based on the fact that there's not funding for the previous plan that we had presented to you over the last couple of years. We've reverted back to just working on systemics, keeping our roos and good structure, keeping HVAC systems working operationally so that their, our children are cooled when they're supposed to be cooled and warmed when they're supposed to be warmed, and of course, dry all the time with the proper roofing systems and doors and windows. As we go to the next slide, again, the plan aligns to the 2020 Educational Facilities Master Plan, which you approved in June. It assumes that 79% state public school construction program funding is available for educational, excuse me, for eligible construction costs. And we're following the instructions for submission of the FY 22 Capital Improvement Program from the Maryland Public School Construction Program. So those are the parameters and guidelines that we follow. And Mr. Rollins will walk you through the next several years of appropriations.
If we could have the next slide. Good evening, Board. These eight projects are for fiscal year 2022. They're the ones that we went over with you when we did our Educational Facility Master Plan. So this is in alignment with that master plan. The total is $16.4 million in both state and local dollars. You can see the $11.3 and the $5.1 million we're asking from each of those entities. These projects represent the greatest needs in the system right now, and they are listed in priority order so that if any of those projects can't be funded, the most important ones are listed and receive the funding first. As you note, the Smithsburg HVAC replacement project was partially funded last year by the state, and they will fulfill their requirement to fully fund that project this year. And then the other projects will kind of see what happens once it gets down to the state. If we don't get some of these projects approved by either the state or the local government, we will roll them into future year requests. Go to the next slide, please. This next slide shows the requests for FY 23 through 27, and these are five years. There's 28 projects that we're asking, that we'll be asking for approval for. Those projects are spread across 19 schools. There's 12 roof projects, eight HVAC projects, five electrical distribution projects, a chiller, and a window replacement. They average about $16 million total per year. You can see, we're trying to line that, those local dollars as close as we can to what the county right now is saying that they'll spend. It's a little, slightly above what they're saying at $4 million, but we're hoping that they can either find that money, or if all projects aren't approved, it'll just, some will slip to the following year. Can go to the next slide. Finally, this is just the full six years of the request. You can see each year, there are a grand total of 96, almost $97 million, 67 of which would come from the state, and 29 million which would come from the local government, hopefully. I think that's our presentation with the Board's approval tonight. It'll allow staff to then go through the process of sending our requests to both the state and the local governments and see where they come back with the funding that they'll provide.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Mr. Prue, did you have anything you wanted to say before we move to a motion?
No follow-up, Mrs. Williams and Mr. Rollins. I, we're happy to take any questions the Board members may have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the state and local fiscal year 2022 Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Are there any questions or any discussion? Mr. Bickford?
Okay. Mr. Rollins, can you go over again how it works when the county gives a certain amount and then we can get matching dollars from the state? And could you review what the status was this past year and as we move ahead into the next year?
Well, we put in a request to the state. Of course, Mr. Prue showed that the state would fund 79% of the eligible construction cost. Local government has to pick up the other 21% if the project's to move forward, as well as soft costs like engineering and things like that, testing, inspection, things that aren't part of the construction. Right now, the county shows in their CIP approximately, or exactly, $4 million per year in matching funds. And so we've tailored the state request to be as close to that $4 million in matching local funds as we can. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I just, I always found it fascinating that it, you have to spend a little bit locally for the state to match at almost 80%, and yet we didn't get fully funded. And I would imagine moving, and this was before COVID, correct?
Correct, correct. Yes, I mean, in past years, we had, of course, we were looking to build some replacement schools, and the funding that the county's providing can in no way, shape, or form provide enough money to be able to do that. So we stepped back and we're just doing what we can to keep the schools running in the meantime. And that's the, that's the best we can do, and we'll keep everybody warm in the winter, cold in the summer, or in the warmer months, cool anyway, not cold, and dry, and we'll try to keep the buildings running as efficiently as we can. At some time in the future, we're going to need to take another look at replacing some of our schools as they age. By the end of this decade, all our school inventory will average 40 years in age, with some in the 70 and 80-year range, so.
I just find it fascinating, if I was to make an investment and I give $20, knowing I'm immediately getting $80, why you wouldn't, why you wouldn't make that investment? But so far, that's, we have not received that from our commissioners. So, I know there's a lot of people listening tonight, so when these things come up for approval before the county commissioners, if you have strong feelings about that, please let your voices be known. Thank you.
Mr. Stauffer, I see your hand.
Yes, wasn't there a plan put forth by the commissioner's staff to, where we would make up the difference in the local amount by taking money out of our maintenance of effort money?
Well, Mr. Stauffer, yes, in past years, when we were asking for funding for new schools, replacement schools, the county did show that they would still stick to $4 million in total appropriations from their side, and any money that was needed in order to make up the difference between what we requested and what they were willing to give, they showed as being, having to be a contribution from the Board out of its general fund.
You know, it's like, they hand it to us and then we hand it back. I mean, doesn't make sense, so. But I want everybody out there to realize, if we can't build new schools or replace them when they are needed, which Scharsburg is an example, we did replace that one, but it may be years before we build a new school in this county. And if we can't build new ones, we certainly have to maintain them, and that costs money also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Anyone else have a question or a comment?
Yes, I do, Mrs. Fisher. Not so much a question, but a comment. That money that the commissioners suggest we should take the difference from is actually the money that we need to operate schools and supply teachers and all the items and the buses and so on that any school system would need. So if, if we have to take money from that general fund in order to make up the difference, the commissioners won't pay, then students are going to lose out on something.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any other comments? Colleagues, I'd like to backtrack. We're having discussion and questions, and I know Mr. Gessford made the motion. Who was the second to Mr. Gessford's motion?
I think it was Stan.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make note of that. Thank you very much. So if there are no further questions, no further discussion, then we'll move to the vote. The motion is to approve the state and local FY 2022 Capital Improvement Program Plan. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Ridenhour? Mr. Ridenhour? Okay, I have six affirmatives. Anyone opposed to the plan? Anyone abstaining? Okay, we have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, our next agenda item is consideration of the first reading of proposed changes to policy DIG capitalization program slash limit.
Good evening, President Williams. This is David Brandonberg, Board members, and Dr. Michael. Good evening. Tonight, I bring you the first reading of proposed changes to policy DIG capitalization program slash limit. These changes were reviewed by the Finance Committee on July 28th and the Policy Committee on August 25th. Finance staff has recommended an increase in the capitalization criteria for financial reporting purposes from $1,000 to $5,000, and an increase in the minimum useful life from one to two years. These changes would bring our policy up to date with the best practices provided by the Government Finance Officers Association and align more closely with the county's policy. We've consulted with our auditors on this change as well, and they agree. I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brandonberg. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy DIG entitled capitalization program slash limit.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Now we'll open the floor for discussion or questions for Mr. Brandonberg.
I don't have any questions. I'd like to add a couple comments about the policy. This is Mrs. Fisher. DIG does establish how various items are categorized and laws according to the Financial Reporting Manual of the Maryland Public Schools. This policy is needed, as Mr. Brandonberg said, to update and accommodate the changes a state requirement has made. Assets are either listed as property or as buildings or equipment, and each item must be accounted for, tagged if appropriate. and each item must be accounted for, tagged if appropriate, and capitalized. Basically, everything that the school system owns, from land to instructional equipment, must be accounted for. And those amounts, the value of those items were changed. Therefore, we had to change our policy to accommodate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Stauffer, I thought I saw your hand. Did you have a comment or a question?
I was just going to ask Mr. Brandonberg to just simply explain capitalization, but I think Mrs. Fisher already pretty much answered that or not.
Okay.
Yes, it's just for financial reporting purposes and for tracking for depreciation purposes.
Colleagues, any other questions or comments before we move to the vote? Okay, the motion is to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy D I G entitled capitalization program slash limit. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, I see seven hands and the student member concurs. Motion passes unanimously with the student member concurring. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brandonberg. And next, we have another policy for consideration. And these are proposed, first reading of proposed changes to policy A C.
Good evening again, President Williams, members of the board and Dr. Michael, John Materano, chief legal counsel and staff liaison to the Policy Committee meeting. The agenda item before you this evening is the first reading of proposed changes to policy A C non-discrimination statement for the board's review and comment. The Policy Committee reviewed the proposed changes to policy A C at its public work session on August twenty-fifth, 2020. The proposed changes are being recommended because of changes to Maryland law relating to protected classes and the recent changes to the federal regulations, specifically Title IX of the Civil Rights Act. I would also mention the Policy Committee is recommending changes to the format of the policy, adding purpose, background, and definition sections to better align this policy with the format of other Board of Education policies. The Policy Committee recommends approval of the first reading of the proposed changes to policy A C.
Thank you, Mr. Materano. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy A C entitled non-discrimination statement.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Murray, seconds.
Hi, thank you, Mrs. Murray. I heard Mr. Gessford first, so I'll take Mr. Gessford's second. Are there questions or comments? Mrs. Fisher, would you like to speak to this policy?
Just very briefly, it does cover both employees and students. And as Mr. Materiano said, is required updating to cover some new categories and terminology in both state and federal laws. The other thing we did, of course, was, as he mentioned, we put it into our newer format.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions, any discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing you all because of the something that's posted there, so I'm going to have to call for a roll call vote because I'm not able to see all hands. But now you've come back. Okay, we'll do the hand thing. So the motion is to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy A C entitled non-discrimination statement. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I see seven hands and one from the student rep, so we have unanimous approval with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Materano. So we'll move to item number seven, which is a presentation by the superintendent, followed by a decision. Dr. Michael, are you ready?
I am. Have two, two presentations I'd like to make to the board related to this topic of the potential return of our students and staff to the buildings. We're going to begin with by breaking down the metrics that the governor included, not in his press conference today, but in the press conference from last week. A lot of people misinterpreted some of the data that was shared in that press conference. And we just want to go through the actual data here from Washington County and what we've determined it means to us. So with that, I'm going to ask that staff put up the graphics that are available. And I'm going to ask Mr. Prue, he's our liaison with the Health Department, has been working closely with them, has done a great deal of studying this. And if he would give the board and the public a brief overview of this, will certainly respond to any questions you have. And then I'd like to share a potential reentry plan for consideration this evening. Mr. Prue?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Good evening again, board members. So what you have now in front of you on the screen is sort of the top part. The governor's metrics are broken into three parts, and we've tried to break them into simple sections in that that it is a flow chart. So we start with the overall, the overall testing positivity rate. This is a daily metric. All the data is tracked on the, on the state of Maryland's website at coronavirus.maryland.gov. So you can see that the first step in the, in the decision tree is to determine whether the daily positivity rate is less than or greater than five percent. At current, the positivity rate in Washington County is running less than five percent. So our decisions, as we look at the reopening of school and the bringing of students back into our school buildings, will trend to the left side of the document. But at any point in time that the positivity rate would grow greater than five percent, we would trend back over to the right side. If I could move to the next slide, please. This is the current positivity percentage for Washington County. The slide you have on the screen, the blue line is the state positivity rate. The red line is the Washington County positivity rate. And at current, I believe the, the state rate, or excuse me, the county rate for Washington County is approximately two point three, if memory serves me correctly. So we are working to the left side. As we move into the next slide and we start talking about the middle phase in terms of what type of instruction we might have, we're now, we're looking at new cases. And the new cases is viewed on the state's website as a trailing seven-day average. So a rolling seven-day average where we're, we're viewing and we're looking at the trends over a number of days. Anything, again, on the left side of the, of the screen, anything where we are less than five cases per hundred thousand residents. And do keep in mind that Washington County has approximately a hundred and fifty thousand residents. But anything less than or equal to five cases per hundred thousand residents, we should be looking at expanding in-person programs. As we move closer to greater than fifteen cases per hundred thousand, we want to limit our in-person programs. Again, going back, if we look at, if we ended up on the right side of the decision tree, again, we're still looking at less than five and greater than fifteen. But you can see that if you have a positivity rate greater than five and cases greater than fifteen, you may want to consider limited or no-person instruction, which is sort of where we are today with full distance learning. So you get a sense of, of how both sides of the screen look. If we show the next slide, we can actually see the, the case rate for Washington County and the state. Again, Washington County is the red line and the state of Maryland is the blue line. You can see we continue to trend less than the overall state number. And as of yesterday's data, the, the Washington County seven-day rolling average is about seven point zero nine. So we are trailing on the, the lower end of the left side of the metric as we move forward. Finally, moving into the last slide, as we move it through the phases, as we enter students back into our buildings, we want to continue to reassess what's going on with the, with the, the metrics within our county. So what we're looking for is, over a two-week period, are we seeing increases in of more than two cases per hundred thousand individuals? Or are we seeing an increase of one percent in the positivity rate or more? And as we view the metrics and as we look at the rolling fourteen-day numbers on these two important metrics, we will determine whether we should stay where we are if data is flat, potentially move forward if the metrics are, continue to decline, or potentially go backwards and potentially take some students that we've returned to buildings and send them home if we're trending in a, in a direction where the positivity rates or the cases per hundred thousand are increasing in our community. So that's sort of a breakdown of the, the metrics the governor put out and a snapshot of the data for Washington County. And with that, I can return it to, to Dr. Michael.
Board members, I know that's a lot to go through, and I know we went through it a little bit earlier today. Is there any questions that we can answer for you? Are there any questions? Okay, but that's, with that, staff, we'll go ahead and move on to the next set of slides. We can come back if there's questions about the positivity rate. So tonight, I'd like to request the board's consideration of our phase back into returning schools, students to schools. I know there's been some confusion over the last couple of weeks that we're not ready to do this. We are more than ready to return students when it's safe to return to schools. We have had a plan in place. We've kind of formalized it in some of the documents here this evening. I don't know what metrics were used by the governor or Dr. Salmon to determine that we weren't ready, but I can assure you we are ready. We're recommending the board consider, I mean, right now, in the spring, we were under circumstances of kind of an emergency distance learning, crisis distance learning, a variety of people have declared it different ways. Right now, we're in what we're describing as stage one, which would be our distance learning plan for all students. And what we're recommending is to take a, take a look at on September sixteenth, which is a Wednesday, to continue with our distance learning, but also move into allowing students to return to the building. So staff, if we'd move on to the next slide. So again, stage one is that full distance learning in both elementary and secondary. And that's where we started the school year yesterday. As we look at stage two, so here's how we're recommending on September sixteenth. Obviously, staff would all return, including our instructional assistants would return, our bus services would return, food services, there'd be food service workers that would return. I don't know that it would be all food service workers yet to help support these students. But we would open the building on the same schedule we're on right now, from nine to two-thirty, at our elementary schools for all pre-K students. So all pre-K students would have the opportunity to return and or stay on distance learning. In addition to our pre-K students, our English language learner students, our English learner students are struggling with the distance learning model, so we make the opportunity available for them to return, as well as all special education students, pre-K through five. This would include our RISE or our autism program, our summit programs, our connections programs, which is the new title for our life skills students. Also, students with a five oh four plan would be eligible to return pre-K through five. As we look at secondary, it's a very similar time schedule. We're looking at the bus schedule. Some of this might work together between elementary and secondary. We might run some of this separate, but we'd be recommending all English learners return in the stage two, as well as all special education students, as well as all five oh four students. So board members, we're requesting consideration of that tonight, along with staff returning, as well as the opportunity to continue to move through the next couple of stages that we can move to stage three. Provided that we were successful, as Mr. Prue described, we reviewed metrics. We don't see an increase in that positivity rate. We don't see an increase in the number of cases per hundred thousand, as indicated in the governor's metrics. We would like to then fairly quickly move into stage three. At that point in elementary, time schedule remained the same, but we would allow all kindergarten students to return, in addition to the pre-K students, in addition to special education students. Also, we would have targeted students that may be struggling, may be experiencing achievement gap or experiencing a lack of progress on distance learning. We would invite those students individually by school to return. The secondary level, again, the time schedule remained the same. The technical high school students would return on a modified schedule. It was difficult to explain in this setting. It would be better we explain it directly to the students. But we need to get our technical high school students back in school so they can earn their certifications, which require a great deal of hands-on learning that's difficult to do via Zoom. Also, again, we identify special populations of students that are struggling, again, achievement gap or lack of progress. In stage three, it would include also all the groups in stage two. During stage three, all the distance learning would continue to continue as it is now for students who experience that don't want to attend school in person. As we move on into stage four, again, we would continue distance learning during this time period. We continue the pre-K, the kindergarten, the special education populations. But in elementary, then, we would actually move back to our normal school day for elementary. So elementaries have various start times. We start on four tiers, slightly different time periods for each of those tiers. But we go back to our traditional, how we normally would start the school day. The length of the day would be the same as it normally would have been last year. And we would add grades one through five strategically, probably tending towards those lower grades that come in first. But also, we would have additional students in addition to our specific population added as we, as we ramp up, depending upon how many students were prepared to return. In secondary schools, in addition to tech high, the special populations and the specific populations attending regularly, we would move into an A-day, B-day for all middle school and high school students. And then finally, we would enter stage five. And stage five would, would in essence be all students returning, and we would end our distance learning opportunity as it exists right now. So the last graph, just as a kind of a summary of all that. And I'd be glad to take any questions on this and or Mr. Prue would be glad to help us with the metrics questions. And we are requesting your consideration to move forward with the plan to move into stage three on September sixteen.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Colleagues, I will open the floor for questions. I'm not able to see you. Now you're back. Now I can see you. Questions for Dr. Michael. Mrs. Murray, I see your first.
Dr. Michael, I think you just said stage three, September sixteenth. Didn't you mean stage two?
I apologize. If I said stage three, I meant stage two.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Mr. Bickford, I saw your hand, and then Mr. Stauffer.
I think Stan beat me on the hand, but I'll, I'll take the question. One, just for, for parents who aren't aware, who are listening, could you explain five oh four? And also, maybe if you could do that first, then I have another question.
Sure. Five oh four plan, students that don't qualify for special education but have circumstances that require some type of accommodation can apply for a five oh four plan. We have a wide variety of students that have five oh four plans. It could be something as simple as you have difficulty seeing and need to be in the front of the room to much more involved type five oh four plans. So again, all of these things, all those special groups that we identified, and each of those stages we identified, as long as we still have our synchronous learning, our distance learning plan going on, people would have the option. So not all five oh four plan children would need to return, but they'd have the option to return. So we're sure we're meeting their accommodation, the same as we're meeting the accommodations for special need children. But they'd also have the option to stay home as well.
Got it. My, my, my second question was, we're putting a date on stage two, and I don't want to necessarily put out arbitrary dates, but how will you determine as, how we'll move to the next phases, the next stages?
I think as Mr. Prue described and as actually described in the governor's metrics, it indicates that you need to follow this kind of in two-week increments. So we want to see in phase, in our stage two, we'll have somewhere, depending upon how many children come, we could have over four thousand children back in school on September sixteenth. You know, what impact would that have on the community? Will our positivity rate remain low? Will our cases of a hundred thousand remain low? We'd want to see, give it enough time to make sure that we're not negatively impacting the community or other circumstances having negatively impacted the community. But I could see us moving particularly to stage three pretty quickly. I think we'd move into stage three pretty quickly. Again, we would measure. I think we'd move into stage three pretty quickly. Again, we would measure what those metrics, if there are any change, can we see a spike at all in our implementation of stage two and three? If things seem to remain pretty steady and or decline, obviously, with them, we would take a look at stage four. Stage five is probably out of ways. We probably have to hear from the governor that he is officially opening schools to all students. There's a great deal of confusion over that. Even today, I did not listen to the press conference. Obviously, we were in closed session. But I believe the governor moved us into the beginning of stage three. But like he has with the other phases, there are pieces to it. So until we're fully in stage three, I don't think we'll be prepared to return with all students, particularly because of the six-foot distancing and be able to manage all those types of things. There's also limits on the number of people in gatherings. So we would have issues in cafeterias, things like that, unless all those things are lifted as well.
Mr. Staffer? Mr. Staffer, you're muted. Mr. Staffer, you're muted. Am I the only one not able to hear Mr. Staffer?
No, he's muted.
He tastes working on it, I think. Other questions we could get to, and we'll pick up Mr. Staffer when when you.
Mr. Bakum.
So Dr. Michael, is there a timeline for when teams can start conditioning slash training? Or when interclass, interscholastic sports will start?
So I had a preliminary look. Eric Michael, our supervisor of athletics and physical education health, shared a draft document with us late this afternoon. We have not had a chance to look at that. We've been waiting on the state to come out with their plan. We heard some preliminary things back in the back several weeks ago. I think with the return of students, if that's approved, that students can return in small groups to the building, I think we would also look at the athletic plan and try to gear that back up. I think it'll be in phases as well. We'll use some virtual conditioning, virtual sports. I think the plan, when it's unrevealed, I think it could go all the way to even inter-county play in an intramural type setting. So I don't know all those details. Like I said, we've only seen a draft of that this evening, some actions from the state to approve that, issue that, and then we'll try to issue some guidelines immediately after that.
Mr. Staffer, are you able to unmute? You had a question. You had your hand up.
Calling on me?
Yes.
Okay, this is why I hate these onboard meetings, technical difficulties. Got to go live. Sorry. I'll ask his question because we're going to get it. Why would we not go hybrid now?
Well, hybrid model's got its own challenges. I think right now, if we had 4,000 children return on the 16th, plus our instructional assistance staff, our bus drivers, those things, I think that'll be plenty to manage in the first phase. We obviously, we're going to try to maintain distance on our buses. We have to maintain distance in our classrooms. So I don't particularly like the A-day, B-day for all children. I think for elementary children, I think it'd be very challenging to be in school one day, out of school, in school, out of school, particularly for some of the youngest children. So we have really thought long and hard through this. We've discussed it for months. And we really want to target those youngest students, our population that's probably most challenged by virtual learning, and move as quickly as as possible to get all students back.
Anyone else? Dr. Michael?
I think I see Mr. Gessr's hand up. This is Williams.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Gessr, did you have your hand up?
Yes, Ms. Williams, I just have one one statement, I guess. As this is for Dr. Michael's, as long as the matrix that we are, we have been provided by the governor, and we stay under that, our our system will continue to progress forward with opening up our our schools. Only if the matrix changed in the opposite direction would we put a pause on and not forward students into the classroom. Is that correct?
As I read the metrics, as long as we stay to the left side on that positivity of five or under for positivity on testing, as long as we stay towards the, what was it, five per 100,000, kind of the between the five and and the 15 per 100,000, I think we would continue to march forward through our stages. If we saw, if we obviously jumped up in one of those numbers and forced us to another part of the flow chart, we would either have to put a pause on. If we get over to the far right of the flow chart, we'd actually have to stop and or back up and or all students back out of school. So parents and students and staff need to be prepared for a little bit of everything.
Would it be possible that if if we would see those numbers change in in like one school and not the other, that we would have that option of keeping one school open and shutting down another, or is it just straight across the board, everything gets shut down? If if we go above that that number?
A little bit difficult to say. I would say if the metrics are above those numbers, we would have to follow it as kind of a county guideline. I would say this, we do have circumstances where we just, by the nature of the school, have relatively small classes, and it's possible that some schools might be back in full before other schools are back in full. In other words, the classes are small enough, school-wide, and or the numbers are small enough with people that are still on synchronous learning, maybe in one of the earlier stages, that it could be an option for all parents to return all students, as long as we can maintain the six-foot social distancing and those types of things.
And would you see the 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 outcome of maybe possibly having parents drop off students instead of busing as a way of keeping students distant as as much as possible?
We are anticipating that we might have even more parents drop off students than we have normally, and or more students drive at the high school level if cars are available. So we are anticipating probably an increase in that, just so you're protecting your child on the bus. Again, we're trying to look at our bus rides and make sure that we're on for short periods of time. A big part of what we're hearing from the health department is you don't want children in contact within six feet for more than 15 minutes. So we would have families sit together on the bus. Obviously, they've been together at home together, and then we would do the best we can to scatter students on the bus. Again, that's part of this phasing in process, and we would need to monitor that. But yes, we'd anticipate probably more parents dropping children off, and we would have to probably ramp up our parent dismissal and arrival process, which is pretty intense already at the elementary level.
Okay.
Mr. Riedhauer, I see your hand.
Yes, ma'am. I'm right now, I'm a little befuddled, I guess, and disappointed, I'm very disappointed with the comments and actions by the governor. I think this has been jammed down your throat, Boyd, and everybody else's. I'm still concerned about, you know, starting in school too soon, as I was earlier in the year or earlier this month was. So, you know, I I'm not quite sure how to take it. There's nothing wrong with the plan. I'm hoping for the best, but I'm still still reluctant to make this move and make out these moves so quickly. So, I mean, I'm going to go against it, not that you've done anything wrong or anybody else has done anything wrong. It's just a personal feeling and and a little disappointment with our elected officials that they, you know, took cheap shots at at our people. That that bothers me immensely. People who are trying to do the very best they can with a insanely crazy situation. So I hope it goes well. I'm still I'm still a bit concerned.
I appreciate that, Mr. Riedhauer. I think all of us are concerned about the safety of our students and staff members. Obviously, that's why the superintendents, at least, we were asking for metrics. We finally got some metrics. It's promising that Washington County is in a very positive, and positive in a good sense, of the metrics right now. And I think, you know, while there'll be a variety of plans across the state, I think this is a good starting point, and we need to be cautious, at the same time, continue to move forward if we are able to. But we do need to remain cautious, and I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Mr. Bigford, may I say something before we come back to you?
Absolutely.
I'd like to go back to something that Dr. Michael said when he was making his remarks about having been working on this plan for months. And we had a missing piece, and that piece was the metrics. And they came out, the governor put those out last Thursday. So I think I'm safe in saying you didn't throw this plan together Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So I I would ask you to say something to the community about the misinformation that was out on social media and among community members about the board and the superintendent having no plan or an incomplete plan for addressing the return to school. Could you speak to that, please?
Well, I I will will somewhat cautiously, I guess. I don't know what the governor or Dr. Salmon was looking at. I I there was no indication to us there was anything wrong with our plan. The plan started way, way back in June. We started discussing the plan as superintendents. There was even some confusion whether it was a plan for summer school or or a plan for, you know, the return of school. Washington County successfully had a middle school summer school for four weeks. We also had a successful special education program this summer for three weeks. We followed all the guidelines that were given by the state. They started out with no non-negotiables, then they developed 10, then it grew to 13. We were told the only real requirement beyond the 13 items was to have our plan posted by August 14th. There would be no review process by the state in any way. And all that has kind of continued to evolve even after our plan was submitted. Some of the things the governor was saying at one press conference a month ago was different than what we were hearing in our superintendent's meeting. So I really can't say much more than that, other than I feel very proud of our staff. We had hundreds of people involved in the development of our program. I'll save some comments about what I've seen in the 14 schools I've been in the last two days for the rest of my comments. But our teachers have worked hard. I I think we're in in as good a shape as anybody else. As they continue to talk about this, they're assuming that everybody has internet. They're assuming everybody has a device. We're fortunate here in Washington County that our devices did arrive in time. We do have a device for every single child pre-K through 12. We are still working on some internet connectivity support for some of our families. We'll obviously always have a little internet connectivity issue, even sometimes at our schools. But I'm very proud of our plan. I have no idea how we got any list, but we fully 100% met the only thing that we know about, which were the 13 requirements. And we absolutely met the 13 requirements and beyond.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Now, Mr. Bigford, you had another question or comment?
Yeah, absolutely. Just a a question. One of my areas that I knew would need to be addressed in order for me to be confident about returning to school is is testing. For a long time there, it was taking 14 to 17 days. Now I'm hearing, and I've actually experienced personally, that tests are getting faster. Can you explain, I I don't think we're going to be doing testing in schools, but we do have a relationship with Meredith. Is there anything that we could do to ask that we get priority to try to make tests that we need as rapidly, as rapid as possible?
Well, I don't want to speak for Meredith, and obviously, we'd need to talk with them. But I think also with the implementation of this plan, we would see our nursing staff return. So last spring, our contract with Meredith kind of came to an end for the spring period because obviously, we didn't have any students in school. This would allow, this plan would allow the nurses to return. And I just want to state it as a possibility, maybe we could even do testing at schools for staff or students who wanted testing. Now, I wouldn't want to overwhelm the testing process, but maybe we do by, you know, if anybody was symptomatic or, you know, some random testing or something like that. That's not part of our plan right now. It's not a recommendation from the health department at this point. But if tests become more and more available, if that rapid test becomes available and it's readily available, I think it's something we invest in as a US Board of Education, as Washington County Public Schools. I'd be fine with it available to any parent, any student, any staff member, if it was that readily available and that quick. Right now, I wouldn't want to overwhelm Meredith or get them off track. Right now, it seems like two, three days you're able to get results back, which is a very promising factor right now.
Yes, Mr. Bakum, I see your hand.
I want to know about topic. If a student or staff were to test positive with that, would the school have to be shut down for two weeks?
Mr. Bakum, what I understand is we would go through a process, as we've talked to the health department, and we certainly can have Mr. Stoner come and speak to the board in two weeks. But they say each case they handle differently. So really, we want to do contract contact tracing with some of that. And really, what we're doing is the staff here, for the staff, and we've just, one indication for the governor, probably Washington County is probably one of the few systems that's had its whole central office staff back, its whole administrative team back, its 12-month staff back. For months, we've been back in the building. But we've handled each case individually. We've only had a handful of cases. But we would just handle it that way. I don't see one student shutting down a whole building. Again, a key part for us is remain six feet apart, remain, you know, if you get in close quarters, which is going to happen. I mean, people are concerned about passing in the hallway. So as long as you keep moving, well, we understand that it's a very, very, very low risk that you would be infected. Now, if you stand there two feet apart and talk for a half an hour, masked or unmasked, that would probably be an indication that those students would need to be quarantined for a period of time or at least tested. So I don't see one student would not shut down a building, but what the health department in short has said, every case is different.
I also have.
Mr. Bakum, go ahead, and then we'll have Mr. Staffer follow you.
Okay. So what my main worries is those kids who are in special education, other programs like that. So if those students were to go back on September 16th or in the later stages, wouldn't their confidentiality of receiving those programs be like given out since other, they may have other peers who are not going back to school yet, and they will learn that there is a building?
Sorry, Mr. Bakum, I missed I missed a part of your question there. Something cut out on my end.
Sorry, let me rephrase that better. So if a student is receiving special education services, or like an IEP or 504, right? If they're in the building and other students who are their peers are not in the building yet, wouldn't their confidentiality of receiving those programs be given out? Is there any like, are you worried about that or something like that?
So if I understand your question correctly, what will happen in these early stages is the special education students would be in the class with a regular teacher. They'd be instructed along with the synchronous students, so they would have an opportunity to interact with them, only they'd be there in person with the teacher. There'd be opportunities where we have additional time that our special education students would receive additional support. We'd also, with the return of our instructional assistants and the students being in person, we'll be able to provide some additional support. So we would have interactions with all students at the same time, including students that ever stayed home, that would need special ed services. We would continue to provide those students services the very best we could via distance learning. I don't know if that answers your question or not, Mr. Bakum.
Okay, so just to like clarify, so students who are special education, they'll be coming back at the same time as students who are not, or is this baggage?
Special education students would be part of stage two, and they would actually have the opportunity to come back first. They would not have to come back. They could stay out on distance learning, or they could opt to come back as one of our first groups to return, as well as 504, as well as our English language learner students, as well as support-based students.
Yeah, so what I was just trying to say is that since they're coming back before a lot of other students who might not be receiving those services, wouldn't it be disclosed that they're receiving that, like if they see those students in the building before them?
I see what you're saying. I mean, obviously, we would protect the identity of students the very best we can. Majority of the population wouldn't know who's back and who's not back. Majority of the population wouldn't know who's back and who's not back. Dr. Pugh, I don't know if you want to help me out with that question, or Mr. Willow, Dr. Willow?
Sure. Their students are all in the same classes, and whether they're attending, they're still doing distance learning. They're just attending in the, in the school building, so they'll see each other the same way that they would see each other on full distance learning, on the same screens. Kids would still be using their, their devices. So it's still, when you're looking at it on class, on screen, it's still distance learning. The difference is, is that when you're on class for your 35-minute AP bio class and that turns off, there's additional time between that time and the next class where we can provide additional support for the students who need it and include additional conversation for English learners to really hear and use the English language. So the idea is, is that they would be mixed with other students and not breach confidentiality, but certainly that's a concern. They do have the right to continue at home.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh.
Colleagues, any other questions? Mr. Stauffer, go ahead.
Yes, I'm reading some notes here that I made on my iPhone and also notes that I made on a pad here. So if you see me looking down, I've been looking down. If I forget a point or two, I just want to reiterate some points so that everybody listening understands, I think, where this board and this superintendent stands. It was the governor, not the Board of Education of Washington County, that closed schools here in the spring when our case infection rate was relatively low and everything. So with the governor closing down the schools, we have to wait for the governor to say, you can open back up. Having said that, I want to make it clear, too, that I was appalled when the governor put us in that category that we had no plan, because as vice president of this board, I knew otherwise. And if I could have asked the governor that question, been at the news conference, I would have asked him. We were not delinquent in submitting a return to school plan to MSDE. Our plan meant all the components designated by MSDE. And when I listened to the news conference, I heard the governor say that schools are open for, for school boards and school systems to transition returning students safely and gradually. He didn't say put everybody on a bus and it's just school as usual. And so with that, I might add that returning to in-person instruction under COVID restrictions will not resemble the, the way we returned to in-person instruction that occurred under non-COVID circumstances. And somebody, I got a message today from a person, does this mean that school sports will start opening back up? That decision will be made by the Maryland Public Secondary Schools Athletic Association. And they have the governing power over high school sports. As a former coach and athletic director, I know we're awaiting word from them as to just what their plans are for athletics and so forth. And I will add this final comment. There isn't one person, I don't believe, and colleagues, correct me if I'm wrong, but there isn't one person sitting on this board who was satisfied with doing virtual instruction, who didn't want to see students back in school. But we were restricted by state governing boards and officials, the governor, the Maryland Department, State Department of Education, the State Board of Education. Our hands were tied in many ways. And the criticism that's been rendered against local school boards, as Mr. Rodenhoury said earlier, is just unfair. It's uncalled for. It's uncalled for. I mean, if I could put every kid back in school tomorrow, personally speaking for myself, I'd say, let's go for it. But that's not the case, and we have to proceed. And you saw the metrics. Where were they all summer? Why did the governor wait till four days before some school systems opened up yesterday? And I have a vested interest in this. Yesterday, I watched a seven-year-old granddaughter at our house because they don't have internet, you know, online. So, and she's entering the second grade at a local elementary school. And so I know what goes on with that. We watched her, and it was something. The teacher was doing the best she could do to address all the needs of the students and stuff, but it's, we all know it's not going to replace in-school instruction. But we're in a situation with COVID. We don't know when it's going to end, when they're going to say it's all over, go back to living as normally as possible, so we have to be patient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Are there any other comments? Mr. Bickford?
I'd be happy to make a motion if you'd like.
Go ahead, Mr. Bickford.
And this is a bit of a leap of faith, but, but I will make the motion that we move to approve the superintendent's overall plan for returning students, teachers, and staff to school buildings for in-person instruction, beginning with moving into stage two on Wednesday, September 16th. Moving forward, the superintendent shall determine when it is appropriate to move from each stage as determined by the governor's metrics. As we move through stages, students' families will have a choice whether to return to school buildings until said time as distance learning ends.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Mrs. Murray, seconds.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion? Any questions? Mr. Bickford?
Since I made the motion, I'll just talk a bit about it, since I was also one who voted for flexibility in our last meeting, and we did have a lengthy discussion about this in closed session. And this is a bit of whiplash to immediately ask teachers to return to buildings, though I was, Dr. Michael convinced me that we will need teachers because students will be spread out, and we will need teachers to be in person. Plus, a few other things have happened that build my confidence. One is I went on a trip to Boston, Massachusetts, and everybody wears masks. And when I moved around, I wore masks. And I will tell you, it is freeing because you have freedom again wearing a mask. And we've had some school board meetings in person, and we wear masks. And I had a meeting at a bank yesterday, and we wore masks, and it gives you freedom again. So between that, between the practices of wearing masks, which I know is part of our plan, and between the fact that, you know, we can now get rapid testing, and I would hope that's only going to improve. I continue to see very positive news. There's even a test available that maybe we can, that they're going to flood the market with, apparently, that's almost like a pregnancy test, where you know in 15 minutes whether you're positive or not. Those are all things that give me great confidence. And then the fact that finally have the metrics from the governor, and I know people will say, well, you've been able to look at online data before. We can't call Johns Hopkins and ask for the authority on this virus or the epidemiologist. Our governor can. Those are the people he speaks to, to give him confidence to make these orders. And we've been asking to cooperate with him all summer to give us some confidence that we can freely open schools again. And he waited until Thursday of last week, which at some point it's bridge underwater, except I would have thought that that would have been a positive press conference. We've all been living with COVID, and here he is saying, you know, it's starting to come to an end, maybe. At least even today, he's moving into stage three. Yet, yet again today, he criticized eight counties as not having plans. All you had to do was ask Governor Hogan. We would have told you, if you wanted a date, we would have told you a potential date. I just was appalled that we were political pawns. And, you know, he gave us the information, and now I would believe we're doing something that he probably wants, which is that we're going to start to reopen schools. I imagine it won't be as fast as some people want it to be, but it sounds like it'll be measured. It sounds like Dr. Michael has a plan to reopen schools, to examine them every two weeks. So that's why I make this motion, and that's why I have the confidence moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mrs. Murray?
I agree with Mr. Bickford and everything that he said. And two weeks ago, when we decided for the flexibility there again, we were going under something different, and then the governor came out with all of this information that we didn't know about. And so we're asking teachers to be back in the buildings by the 14th. I do feel a little bit bad about that because we flipped, but it's a necessary thing. If we want to move forward, it has to happen. So my apologies. I just, it's just the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Anyone else before we move to the vote? Is there a need to repeat the motion? Is everyone clear on the motion? Just nod.
Repeat it.
Repeat it.
The motion is to approve the superintendent's overall plan for returning students, teachers, and staff to school buildings for in-person instruction, beginning with moving into stage two on Wednesday, September 16th. Moving forward, the superintendent shall determine when it is appropriate to move from each stage as determined by the governor's metrics. As we move through stages, students' families will have a choice whether to return to school buildings until said time as distance learning ends.
Okay, so, Mr. Stauffer?
So I have a question. Will teachers have to balance? So all teachers will have to come back, or they still have a choice? And if so, will they have to balance between in-person and virtual instruction? Does that? Dr. Michael?
Initially, when we only have a small group of students back, so pre-K would solely be pre-K. If we had students that were still on synchronous pre-K, we would probably move all those to one teacher. And I think you would see this ebb and flow almost daily as people have more confidence in children returning. I think we would see more pre-K children return, and we'd have to continue to adjust our synchronous learning. And for any reason people lost confidence in that, it might be that our synchronous would grow, and we'd have to change and adapt to that. That's part of this need to be available and flexible the entire time. I think with the, even though it's in the thousands of students with special ed and 504s and ELs, they're going to be scattered throughout the buildings and across all 1,800 teachers. So I think teachers could expect to see two or three children in their rooms, and they would work with, they would just teach their synchronous lesson. The difference would be, as Dr. Pugh described, the children would be there, they could be on and be seen or not be seen. It certainly could be on a device right there in the room, but it's that additional help, that IA that can be there with them to support them, the teacher being able to prompt them, help them get them started. Just the fact they can physically see the teacher and watch them in action, all those things, we believe is going to make a big difference for particularly our EL, special ed, 504 students.
Any other questions before we move to the vote? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Stauffer, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Rodenhour, are you frozen?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. You weren't moving, and I wasn't sure. I just wanted to check. Okay, so we have six affirmative votes, any nays? One nay? Okay, so we have six affirmative votes, one nay, and the student member, Kevin, I'm sorry, I missed your hand. Are you concurring?
I concur.
Thank you. So with six affirmative votes and the student member concurring, the motion carries. So at this time, Dr. Michael, we'll move to your superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, President Williams. Just a few things to say. First of all, I don't know how I express enough thanks to our teachers, to our administrators, to, excuse me, the limited number, excuse me, ESP employees that we have in at this time, but they made the last two days for students, I think, the very best they could. It's not a substitute right now for obviously in-person learning, but I've had the opportunity to be in 14 of our schools so far yesterday and today. I've spent the majority of today and then yesterday out in schools. Teachers are in good spirits. Some of them are saying, you know, we're doing the best we can, and I'm very, very proud of their efforts for that. Some are just doing a phenomenal job. I just can't express my thanks enough to them and the hard work they're doing, the leadership from the principals, the assistant principals, and others. It's pretty amazing to go around and see this little cockpit kind of station set up, particularly at elementary, either their kidney bean table or half-moon table, and their laptops set up, their desktop set up, an iPad set up, a document camera, their personal iPhone, whatever they have. They're being very creative. Some of them have a math area, an English area. They move about their room. They're holding a book up in front of the children. I was in a classroom today, and a teacher was tucked down behind a shelf, and I wasn't sure what was going on, but I kind of walked up and looked over top what she was doing, here she was there with her laptop, kind of making a little tunnel to help count with manipulatives. So we're up on a magnetic board. One of our teachers had a stand that he had made, like a four-foot by six-foot platform. A very tall teacher, and he had this gigantic monitor up where he could see his students, much larger than the very small Brady Bunch kind of look. Again, all these things are just fantastic. For those of you that know Mr. Bear at Boonsboro, he kind of topped them all. He had five or six lights shining, you know, full-stage production, multiple everything. I was really, really impressed. But I saw that everywhere that I went. Our teachers are really going all out to help our students while they're on distance learning. And again, I just want to express my gratitude to them, to our administrators, and again, to our ESP people that are working. And I look forward to our whole team kind of getting back together on the 16th, and I'm very excited about that. Sometimes you need to go slow to go fast, so I just need people, folks, to be patient that are anxious for all students to get back. If we go too fast, we'll fail, and it will suddenly all be back out. So we need to go slow to go fast at this point. I was pleased, finally, as we finally got school open, USDA and Maryland State Department of Education announced that our meal program for the summer is going to continue. So all children ages 18 and under are eligible for meals at our meal sites. Meal sites are open from 11:00 to 1:00. So just like our summer meal program, that will continue identically to the summer meal program from now through December 2020. So very excited about that. We'll make sure we continue to push out more information about that. One last thing I would say to families, I know technology is probably frustrating, a little bit frustrating to us tonight as a board and team members here. It's just the nature of the beast. But we do have a tech hotline available from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday. We even have staff that are available that speak Spanish. I wish we could cover all 41 or two or three of our languages, but we'll certainly do our very best to help everybody. On top of that, there's some additional support coming at each of the school sites soon, and that information will all be pushed out. We appreciate our partners at Comcast and Tedom, and they're working very quickly for those that have qualified for some special rates, and we're very excited about the progress that we're making. We will continue to have technology glitches. It's just the nature of the beast, but very excited about our program so far. With that, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Michael. We'll move now to personnel action. Dr. Pugh?
Good evening. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the personnel report.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer, for the motion, and Mr. Gessford for the second. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of accepting personnel action as recommended? All those in favor of accepting personnel actions as recommended? Okay. Unanimous vote. So personnel actions are approved unanimously. We'll go to reports to the board. Any reports?
I can go.
Go ahead, Mr. Bickford.
Finance committee met Tuesday, August 25th, in person at the board, all wearing masks, and it was a very pleasant meeting. We reviewed the, some changes in the prescription plan. We were assured that while some prescriptions for certain of our people that are covered won't be on the list, there are matching prescriptions, and overall, we will achieve savings from this. We also reviewed some fourth-quarter budget adjustments and got some very good numbers on our health insurance plan. We are very healthy after, many people know that several years ago, we spent a good portion of our health insurance fund down after a very busy year, and that has recovered and then some. So, and we also reviewed Impact Aid. And we did set another meeting, I believe, in late October. I'll be more specific at our next meeting.
Thank you. Any other committee chairs? Mrs. Murray, I saw your hand first.
Muted. There we go. I'm sorry. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee will meet on Tuesday, September 22nd, at 4:00 p.m., and Amy Saylor, the K-12 Math and Science Supervisor, will show us the new math kits and science packets.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy committee met August 25th to review and update the two policies, which we approved earlier this evening, that was AC and DIG. We also began a review of another policy, GBAA, sexual harassment for school system employees. And next, I think it's the 17th of September, we will be meeting again at 1:00 p.m. We will continue reviewing policies under Section J for equity. We're not sure if this will be in-person or virtual at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Anyone else? Mr. Stauffer?
Yes, yesterday, Maryland Association of Boards of Education Legislative Committee met, and I'll just summarize quickly. Every school district in this state, Baltimore City, everyone was amazed, and that may be an understatement, at the governor's press conference held last Thursday. So we're not the only ones. It's just not Washington County. It's all 24 districts. All 24 districts are moving to try to comply with the governor's order in a safe and gradual manner. And there were some other things that took place. I know today, the state board was meeting, and I don't know the outcome of it. I haven't had time to check the news, but they were meeting about screen time and making some revision to the state, to the various plans and so forth. To me, there should have been some direction. I think our return plan met the screen time provisions, perhaps, that they were thinking about, from what I understood. But I haven't seen what they finally decided, the state board, and why they didn't do this weeks ago, I don't know. But it's a mess. We'll get it straightened out.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any other committee chair wish to give a report? Okay, we'll move then to miscellaneous business, future agenda items. You have a future agenda item list included in your board packet. I would ask that if you have any suggestions for future agenda items, to please let a member of the planning committee know, the Agenda Planning Committee. That would be Dr. Michael, Mr. Stauffer, myself, Dr. Pugh. We'll see what we can do about getting your concern on the agenda for a future meeting. We'll move then to board member comments. How would you like to go? Would you like to go alphabetically backwards, maybe? How about if we start with Mr. Bickford?
All right. I will say, so my wife's a teacher in Frederick County, and she teaches virtually, but I imagine with this news, there will be changes there as well. And I will say that it's a wonderful alarm clock to wake up to a very excited teacher talking to very excited students about being back in school. So no matter where school happens, there are many excited people. There's just a magic to the school year beginning that nothing can replace. And I appreciate the patience people have given with us, and they'll need continued patience as we work through some challenging issues in the coming weeks, I'm sure. Again, this is going to be a school year like no other. And there's one other thing I was going to say. Oh, the only other thing I would request is that, that when you're talking about future agenda items, if we could get regular updates on the metrics, I believe there'll be a weekly update anyway, but I think that's going to be important for the school system, just like the county, to release regular updates so that parents are aware where we are and where we could be going next. So thank you very much for a very fruitful meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford, and I have made note of your request to be updated on the metrics. Okay, Mrs. Fisher, how about you?
I'd just like to say that I have seen some wonderful videos on Facebook and sent to me from various staff members. One this morning in particular had tears running down my cheeks. I just want to thank the teachers for everything they've been doing. I know it's not easy. I was a former teacher myself. I can only imagine what I'd be doing right now if I were still in the classroom. So bless you all, and keep it up. You're doing great.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Gessford?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Yes, I'd like to offer some thanks this evening. I'd like to start off with thanking our food service department, who over the summer prepared and distributed thousands of meals each week, either by the meal machine van or at the schools. Without their dedication, this summer, it would have not have been as successful as it was feeding our students. So thank you. To our maintenance staff who worked in our schools polishing and painting and replacing or modeling, and to the maintenance staff who maintain our properties outside, mowing and painting. You did a great job. Thank you very much for your dedication to our schools. And I will tell people, whoever goes to our schools, they may be old, but they still shine. So thank you for that. To our staff who continued to work through the COVID time, our tech department, the secretaries, and all support staff who were in our schools, you are champions, and we, as board members, appreciate what you've done and continue to do, and we look forward to this new school year. And my final statement is, as we work to return our students back into the classroom, we need to come together as a community. It's time to stop pointing fingers, and we look forward to the new plan to return back to the classrooms. This includes parents, community groups, our county government officials, and our community residents. This will take a community to be successful, and I know we can do it. So everyone just needs to work towards the goal, and don't forget the past, but think about the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Mrs. Murray?
Well, Mr. Gessford, that's a hard act to follow. That was a wonderful, wonderful comment. I agree with everything you said. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher and Mr. Bickford. I don't think I could add anything more. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Ridenhour?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, but I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Mr. Stauffer?
Well, I just want to thank all the students, parents, grandparents, daycare providers, teachers, administrators, and anyone else that I haven't named for a fairly successful back-to-school yesterday. It's not going to be easy. And I just want to make one comment about a picture that was shared with board members. It was a young man, I don't know what school he attends. He apparently lives in a camping trailer, and he was sitting outside under the canopy, opening his box of, I think he got his digital device and some other things from the school, and he just had the biggest smile on his face. And it made a person like me, who's got a rather rough exterior at times, I teared up. I mean that sincerely. I'm going to stop because I'm getting sentimental right now, so I'll end right there.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Bocum?
Thank you. I would like to echo the thanks that my fellow board members gave to all the different groups and individuals involved. And I would also like to thank our superintendent for working hard continuously to develop this plan. The return plan was a very thorough and wonderful plan. I read through it, marked it up. It was very nice. And I also trust our superintendent will continue to reassess the condition and metrics of our schools to make sure that students and staff are kept safe.
Thank you, Mr. Bocum. I would like to offer the biggest, biggest thank you imaginable to all those who are supporting WCPS students with their distance learning, whether these be parents or grandparents, siblings, other family members, and caregivers. We're so appreciative of all that you're doing to help our students continue their learning. And to staff, teachers, our superintendent, thank you so much for giving so much of yourselves in an effort to push through this pandemic and do what's right for kids. Together, we can do this. Mr. Gessford, you're so right. It's going to take this entire community working together to get us all through. So, Dr. Michael, do you have anything, any parting words before we adjourn?
I don't have anything further, other than, again, to thank staff. They've done a great job. I know they're going to do a great job all year. I am so proud to be their superintendent and work with them and work with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. So colleagues, if there's nothing else, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you all for a great meeting.